On Monday, the nineteenth of December of two thousand and twenty-two, we're in a work session with a call to order for a utility rate analysis. And I guess I'll turn the mic over to our Public Works Director.
Well, up to you.
Or we're going to talk about streets and how to fix them? No?
Perhaps not right this second.
Oh, heck. All right, go ahead.
So I'll just do a brief intro before Lance introduces the consultant. This is the first of probably three work sessions that we're going to have on the utility rate study. This is really just a foundational work session to let you know what they're looking at. So that's why when Lance said we're not going to get into the specifics, we're not talking actual numbers yet, we're talking what goes into the numbers. So turn that over to you, Lance.
All right. Thank you, Julia. Just a real brief history of how we got to where we're at tonight. In February two thousand and nineteen, the city council members and the executive management team for the city met to establish city council goals for the term of two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty-three. I believe you were all there, except perhaps Councilman Ben. Sarah Singer-Wilson facilitated that session and helped us as a team craft the council goals. The goal-setting session identified and laid out city council goals for the two thousand and nineteen through twenty-three period. One of the goals identified by the council was to develop a capital improvement plan. One of the midterm action steps was to complete a utility rates analysis to examine the resources to fund future infrastructure investments. In May of twenty-two this year, we put out an RFP for a consultant to help the city perform that utility rate analysis. And three proposals were received. The FCS Group, who is represented tonight by Matthew Hobson, was selected to be the consultant to move forward with. We crafted a contract and signed in August. Since that point in time, FCS Group and the city has been working together. And we had a kickoff meeting in late August. And tonight, Matthew is here with some insights to the utility rate study, why they're important to us, and the steps in the process. And that's really what he'll be covering tonight. Like Julia talked about, we have a couple other council meetings to go, and he'll highlight some other things during those meetings. But tonight, we just want to give you a foundation of what we're going to be doing, what we have been doing, and how we move forward. And with that, Matthew, it's all yours.
Great. Thanks, Lance. First, I'm going to share my screen here. Get that going. It's here. Okay, now it should work out. Great, so there should be the presentation on there, Lance, is that right? Can you see the slide deck?
Yes, it certainly is. It's there.
Great. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. As Lance mentioned, my name is Matt Hobson. I'm a project manager with FCS Group. I've been working with the firm for about five years and in this line of work for about fifteen years. FCS Group, just as a quick background, we are a financial consulting firm based out of Redmond, Washington. And we work almost exclusively with local governments in public utility rate setting and financial plans. My presentation today is about twenty minutes or so. And as Lance mentioned, it's really to set the foundation for the utility rate study, really spending most of our time and attention on the process to complete the study, and also talking about those key decision points that will be coming to you for direction and feedback to inform the, really, the strategic direction of the rate study and the results. Please feel free to jump in at any time to do any questions. I do have time at the end of the presentation also reserved for answering any questions and discussing any items that you all find of interest. And I apologize in advance, I'm recovering from a cold. I think my voice isn't always this way, but I could be wrong. So over the next twenty minutes or so, we'll talk about why rate studies are important, specifically in the public utility rate arena. And then we'll cover the key main steps of a rate study, those being a revenue requirement analysis, a cost of service analysis, and then the final step is the actual design of the rates, those fixed and those variable charges that your customers see on their bills. When we think about rate studies, particularly in the public utility realm, these utilities are enterprise funds. And what that means is that the services are being provided by the city for wastewater and water in the streets, that those costs should be paid for from the users of the utility, i.e. your customers, both residential and commercial. This maintains, excuse me, this maintains the long-term health of the utility, the long-term financial sustainability of the utility. With any type of business-related activity in the government, the operation of that business is structured around policies and goals. Some are financially related and others are more policy-driven. Because we want to make sure that a rate study encompasses not just the costs and the revenues, but also the underlying vision of the city for its operation of public utilities. The second step of the study is a cost of service analysis. And what that is, is it indicates what it costs to provide this water service or wastewater service to particular customer classes, such as a single-family residential customer class, or your businesses, or even multifamily. And that can be helpful when determining how your rates are structured, if they are equitable, or in other words proportional, to the cost that is to provide the service. A rate study also provides an opportunity to communicate to your customers on the philosophy, the management philosophy and the long-term vision for the utility. We, as Lance mentioned, we've been working now for a few months. And that's because a rate study, if done correctly and successfully, really, it's not just a financial exercise. We're bringing folks in from across the city, not just to gather data, but to evaluate needs and the direction of the utility. We're speaking with folks from development services to understand what future growth looks like in the city. And we're talking with customer service folks to understand how bills will look on someone's mail when they get a utility bill, making sure that at the end of the day, that the rates that are proposed and eventually adopted by council, that they're understandable to your customers, and they have the desired effect that you all have intended for your As I mentioned, there are three steps in a rate study. The first step is a revenue requirement analysis. And that's a big-picture review for each utility of the total financial requirements to operate that utility. I want to emphasize two key terms here in this definition. We want to make sure that the revenue requirement identifies all of the obligations of the utility. And two, we want to make sure that over the long term, that that utility can operate successfully on a standalone basis, independent of other utilities and independent of tax revenues from the city. Once we identify the full cost of operating capital and financial policies, the second step is looking at that overall cost and proportionally allocating it to different customer classes to tell us how equitable our rates are for different customer classes. This is a somewhat technical exercise, and we use it as a tool to suggest or recommend potential shifts in how we recover revenue from different customer classes. And then the final step is, once we know what that revenue target is for each class of service, then designing fixed and variable charges that, most importantly, bring in the right amount of money to fund utility, but also that they're generally aligned with the cost of service results, and they address those other goals that we might have for each utility. Some of those goals might be encouraging conservation, or making sure our bills are just understandable to our customers. So I'll just address each of those steps briefly here. At the end of the presentation, we'll talk about some of those key decision points. We'll be coming back to you all over the next couple of work sessions to guide the rate study. So for the revenue requirement analysis, as I mentioned, it's overall needs for each utility, and we're evaluating those needs over several years. What you'll see in our next work session is a forecast of expenditures and revenues for each utility over a five-year period. That revenue requirement will include three types of costs. They will include the costs that we maintain to meet our financial policy targets. And those include making sure that we always have enough of a fund balance to meet any emergencies, or also just to manage our day-to-day cash flow. Other types of costs are daily operating costs of running the utilities, and those include salaries and benefits, supplies, any existing debt service that we have. And the last type of cost we look at are those periodic or those bumpy costs we have for our capital program. And those costs will vary year to year, and they're tied to the replacement of our assets as well as any new investments tied to growth. At the heart of that revenue requirement is a collection of financial policies that guide the operation of each utility. And these financial policies provide the foundation from which we measure the success, the financial success of each utility. And by success, what I mean by that is that our revenues are covering our costs. We're not trying to make any money off these utilities, but we're trying to keep them financially sustainable on an ongoing basis. Some of those key financial policies are tied to our budgeting, how we manage emergency preparedness, what types of long-term or strategic decisions should play into our utilities, and then using our financial policies as a communication tool to our stakeholders. Some examples of these financial policies include our operating reserves, which are designed to accommodate any variations in cash flow from year to year or from month to month. For this state study, we are using a financial policy of having a fund balance, a minimum fund balance equivalent to sixty days of operating and maintenance expenses for each utility. And so whatever happens in the future, we want to make sure that we maintain that minimum fund balance each year. In addition to that operating reserve, making sure that we have capital funds available in the case of unanticipated and unplanned emergencies with our assets, either an issue at a treatment plant or a bursted main, being able to have funds in place to address those emergency repairs. The third type of financial policy, which I'll address here in a bit as well, is something known as rate-funded capital. And maybe the idea behind this financial policy is recognizing that our most expensive asset for utilities, most of the time, we can't see them because it's under the ground or they're below the surface of the street. And those assets have long-term lives, and we need to make sure that we're funding the replacement of those assets on a timely basis. So rate-funded capital is meant to address that, that in our rates, we build in the cost to replace the asset over time. So we're not left with an asset that's approached its useful life and not having funding in place to replace it.
Hey, Matthew?
Uh-huh.
Question about that. What happens if we do not meet that deflation or that annual depreciation? What happens to the city at that point?
There, and I'm not aware of any, I would say, legal risks tied to bond covenants. The most visible risk that utility faces is a failed asset without having capital money to repair. So in that sense, you're looking for emergency loan funding that maybe may not have desirable interest rates. It also puts more risk on your general fund than to, for lack of a better term, bail out your utilities to pay for that failed asset.
Thank you.
I'll talk a little bit about that piece, because it's an important element that we try to recommend as a best practice when we do public utility rate studies, is really getting an idea of what that cost is that sits below the ground, and making sure that we're proactively funding the replacement of these assets. And I mentioned before, these are long-lived assets, twenty to forty years in useful life. In practice, it's not uncommon to see water mains in excess of seventy or eighty years old. And so we want to proactively fund the replacement of those assets. And it's a problem, it's a challenge that exists across the country. If we look at a survey that's on every year by the American Waterworks Association, system replacement is consistently the number one issue for the water industry. How do we get ahead of the replacement of our aging infrastructure? To that end, what we recommend in utility rate studies is adding a rate-funded capital policy, which is building within your rates, a component of that rate supports the generation of revenue that's set aside for the cost of repairing and replacing your capital assets and/or saving for future capital projects. The policy target we often recommend for this capital funding plan is, at the very least, putting back into the fund what you paid for the asset, so the original cost depreciation. Best practice is having an asset management plan, where you're proactively funding not the original cost, but the replacement cost of those assets. So as a big picture, the revenue requirement looks at our operating and maintenance costs over several years in the future. What you'll see in the next work session will be a five-year forecast. We'll layer on top of that any existing debt service for each utility, plus a target for rate-funded capital, and the cost of maintaining your financial policy requirements, the minimum financial reserves and the capital reserves. That will give us a total revenue requirement, from which we'll deduct any miscellaneous revenue that you get from grants or connection fees, any element that's not charged tied to a rate assessed by the city. And that difference then becomes our revenue requirement target, that first step in this thing. I'll do a quick pause here. Are there any questions about this first step, the revenue requirement analysis?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, please, please.
This is Councilor Orde. I have a question. So you talked about the enterprise accounts, and I understand that they are paid by, or the money that goes into them is paid by the users of those accounts or those services, correct?
Ideally, yes.
But is there any point in time when you can put money into those accounts that isn't directly from the users?
Yes, yes. Enterprise funds, government, public sector enterprise funds, they can be supported by user fees, and they can be supported by revenues from other sources. What you want to try to avoid is using user fees from the utility going someplace out of that fund. As an example, collecting water revenue and transferring it over to the general fund. That's something we recommend, not recommend doing, but you can, we have revenues go the other way into the utility fund.
Okay, thank you. And then, Mr. Mayor, I have another question?
Go ahead.
Please.
Just out of curiosity, and I don't know if you know the answer to this question, but a lot of times when we're getting grant funding for infrastructure, it's to allow for growth instead of, and we're not allowed to use the funds for existing utilities, either to repair or replace those. Do you know why that is? Why is the state or federal funding not, why don't they allow us to fix what we already have for the community that we already have?
So this is Julia. I can maybe answer a little bit of that. I don't know that that's entirely correct. I'd like to hear what Matt has to say.
Exactly. I would say in general, that's what we're finding is, you know, the things that come to us, it's like, oh, you can only use this. You can't use it on what you currently have.
In our regular business meeting, we have CFM advocates coming, our lobbyists, our federal lobbyists, and he might be able to touch on that a little bit. What our understanding is, is that we actually can make an argument for fixing, you know, not everything, but because of the, you know, the lack of having enough revenue to fix our, I'm not, my brain is blinking on the word, delayed, depreciated, something.
Deferred maintenance?
Deferred.
Bird maintenance?
Deferred maintenance, thank you. That a case can be made that by getting grants from federal or state government, we might be lowering, reducing the impact of user fees. So not to say we're not going to raise user fees, but we might be able to make an argument that we're reducing, we're increasing it less than we would otherwise have to because of this grant. And so we can certainly talk to him a little bit more about that question. But with that, Matt, I don't know if you had anything specific, because there certainly are a lot of grants that are economic development, growth-related.
I would like to add to that, that we are actually using grant money for replacement of the sanitary sewer on Ida Street. That's a five hundred thousand dollar grant we're replacing in an old line that needs replacing, and it has nothing to really to do with growth, it has to do with, that needs replacing, because it's us. So it really, I think what we need to do is, when you go out and you look for money, you're targeting specific projects for those grants, because different organizations have different types of grants. And so in order to get money, you really have to come with a project, a specific project that they look at. And that's how they base your rate, I mean, how they store your grant, is the need for that project, much like we did the sanitary sewer on Ida Street, much like we did the ASR out there, a specific project, and that's how we got the money. What Julia says is absolutely true. There are grants out there that we can go for deferred maintenance of our streets. We've talked about what we're doing. And with that, we'd be able to use it for a number of things in our streets as far as deferred maintenance. Because you've really got to target that specific and tell them what we want to use the money for.
Well, then I stand corrected, and that makes me happy that we can do that, so never mind.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
We've identified in the past, we've got quite a bit of, I guess I would say, outstanding capital projects that probably should have been done five, ten years ago, you know, on the orders of millions of dollars. I guess my question is kind of, what's the strategy, or what's the, how do you factor in, you know, trying to catch up on those projects that are, that had been underfunded previously or hadn't been done previously because of the lack of funding against trying not to dump a giant rate increase on our users?
Yeah, great, great question. That tension exists in rate studies in that we identify overall needs first, irrespective of the impacts to rates, so that we can show you, then here is the rate impact, looking at direction from the council and the mayor in terms of what is really affordable and realistic for the community. So to help inform that discussion, we'll provide several scenarios for each utility showing a range of capital programs, not just our current five-year capital plan, but adding on top of that any deferred maintenance or any optimal capital funding that may be necessary based on a pavement study or some other capital facility plan. So you'll be provided several scenarios that really focus on adjusting that lever for capital funding and then reacting to the corresponding rate impacts. So strategies that we oftentimes look at is, one, phasing in our costs, our deferred maintenance plans, so maybe we can't get there near one, but structuring a multi-year strategy to get us to that overall capital cost target. Another option that sometimes is considered, and I'm going to use the next slide to speak to this, is looking at how we go about funding the capital. If we adopt more of a cash or pay-as-you-go method, what that means is we're using the rates and our cash based, generated from those rates to fund all of our capital costs. That puts the pressure on capital programs on all your existing customers, even though customers twenty or thirty years down the road may be benefiting from that capital investment. On the other side is the issuance of debt in a wise and prudent manner, in that we're incurring long-term debt tied to one-time capital projects with the idea that it spreads the cost and the rate burden over more than just one generation of customers. And of course, there's this spectrum in between those two extremes, where we can model, you know, a mix of both cash and debt. The question of capital funding philosophy and how much debt we use, I think at the very start, it's a discussion with this council in terms of the general management philosophy of utilities. If we're open to incurring more debt, then we can explore that scenario. And if the answer is no, we'd rather pay as we go, we can certainly provide scenarios around that end. Does that help answer your questions?
Yes, thank you.
So unless there's any other questions, I'll keep moving on to the next step in So once we know and identify overall needs by each utility, then we want to go to a cost of service analysis. And put simply, what we look at is the revenue requirement tells us how big that pie is, whereas the cost of service analysis tells us, if we were to structure rates based on cost, how that pie should be sliced. This is a rather technical exercise in a rate study, but it's meant to provide information that you can use to restructure your rates for different customer groups. Because we have to acknowledge that different customer groups interact with utilities differently. Our single-family residential customers, for example, when it comes to the water utility, they tend to have the highest peak demand than all other customer classes, in that in the summer months, they use vastly more water per household than they do in the winter months. We don't see a same peak or that severity of that peak for other customer classes, such as your multifamily residential or even commercial customers. And that matters in terms of cost, if we have to build into our water system capacity to meet summer demand. If the question is, well, who should bear more of that cost? Maybe likely should be those who are driving that demand in the summer months. Now conversely, our commercial customers may have higher fire flow requirements relative to our single-family customers. We want to acknowledge these different usage patterns in developing cost allocations for each class. And so what we'll do is take the overall revenue requirement, and we'll dice it up to different activities within each utility. So for the water utility, for example, we'll take the overall revenue requirement, make enough by the share of those costs that are tied to what we call customer costs. Those are costs that don't change in proportion to the amount of water someone uses. An example of that would be the cost of doing billing or customer service calls, that those calls are somewhat irrespective of the number of gallons someone buys from the utility. We'll look at meter and services costs, base capacity costs, which is the cost to provide water based on the average demand. We'll look at peak capacity, and then fire protection. And so that revenue requirement will be spread into those five buckets. And then each of those buckets will be allocated proportionally to those customer classes based on the level of use each of those customer classes require of that activity. At the end of the day, we want to produce and provide to you all is an example of this table, which shows for each customer class, I'm going to use my, not my laser here, we'll identify by each customer class the existing revenue that's directed from each of those classes, and then what we estimate as the cost to provide service to that class. And we'll see a difference in almost every case between those two numbers for each class. And that's okay, as long as that difference isn't too severe. We generally recommend that adjustments to your rates should be considered if the cost recovery rate for a particular class is beyond plus or minus five percent. And so we'll provide that information to you all. Once again, it's technical information that you all can use as a tool to inform any shifts in cost recovery by classes. I'm going to, another quick pause before I go to the third step. Any questions or discussion on the cost of service analysis?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilor Patty.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Yes, hi. Thank you so much for this presentation so far. It's super helpful to understand your process. I'm kind of curious from city staff at this point, do we currently break out rates by single-family residential and multifamily residential?
Single-family and residential, I'm sorry, residential and commission.
Okay. I was just looking at the table up there, and it's got breakout for the multifamily too. And so I was just wondering, do we break our rates out that way? And so I was just wondering, do we, do we break our rates out that way?
Well, Matthew, maybe you can help me. I, I don't recall doing any multifamily.
Yes.
That's a, that's a great catch. Yeah, yeah, so in response to, to your question, the city currently does not break out between single-family, multifamily, because there's more than example table illustrating all costs.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't think we did, but anyway.
I, I will point out that is, that is one thing we do consider in rate studies is, is of course, we examine your current composition of customer classes, but sometimes there's interest in exploring whether it makes sense to introduce new customer classes or to even consolidate customer classes. So this is something that we, we sometimes will address in, in the process of a rate study. But currently, you correct that there, there is no differentiation in stating for a single-family or multifamily residential customer.
Thank you.
So once we identify those revenue targets by customer class, the final step of the rate study is developing the actual rates and the charges, what customers will see on their bills, uh, both, you know, variable fees and fixed fees that accomplish the overall financial goals of the utility. And I want to emphasize that, that we go into all this work, but in a day, the most important goal of a rate study is to ensure long-term financial sustainability for the utility. We can create really elaborate rate designs, but we, we need to, they need to be successful in terms of bringing the overall revenue to the utility. That's paramount for a rate study. Secondary goals, though, are important, and they include that our rates need to be communication tools with our customers to generate the types of behaviors that we hope to get from our customers. And so it's just an example of the rates that are in place today for the, the water utility. We have a base fee or a fixed fee per customer, $31.67, plus a variable component for water demand, as well as several other charges that we, we charge based on the meter size. So it's going through each of these different rates and adjusting them so that, one, collectively they bring in the correct amount of revenue for the utility, two, that the revenue generated from these rates for particular, particular class are aligned with the cost of service, and then three, that the rates themselves align with our other goals that may be policy-driven and not so much financial-driven. Examples of those goals, um, I have a, a statement here, and as you can imagine, some of these goals are, are mutually exclusive. You can't have one and the other at the same time. And so it's a balancing act of what do we value the most? For those goals that are revenue-related, we want to make sure that we're bringing in correct amount of revenue to sustainably fund the utility, that if it makes sense, make sure that revenue source is stable over time. Some costs for the goals including, include those of making sure that we are charging an equitable price for our services, that customers who, who, um, uh, demand more costs for that service, that their rates recover more of the cost for the utility. And then just practical goals, that, that our goal, our rates should be simple to understand if that's one of our goals, that they need to be sufficiently feasible, and our billing system has to be able to manage that rate structure. Just very briefly here, that our rates also serve as pricing signals to our customers. And, and there's, there's a tug and a pull with that philosophy. By providing those variable rates to customers, in that they can save money on their bill, they use less of that commodity, and sends that priceable to them, which, which is a good thing for many customers. On the flip side, it produces some volatility for revenue planning on the utility. So while our customers, customers are getting more control of their bill, it also comes with less predictability for the utility for, for revenue planning. And that's that tension we want to make sure we balance. There are other tools that we account for in the redesign, peer-out process. We, we can look at where we make breaks in our rate charges for different measures of water usage and make sure we're pricing that, that, um, that rate per thousand gallons based on cost or based on, on the behavior of our, of our utility customers. So those are the, those are the three key steps of the rate study. And so we are, you know, busily engaged with, with city staff and, and evaluating some, some scenarios for the revenue requirement analysis. And what we can anticipate in our next work session is the, the technical results of the rate study coupled with some key questions for this group. And it's, it's fine if you don't have answers for these questions tonight. In fact, I'd be worried if you did. And so I want to, I want to plant these, these as seeds for our next meeting. So for the revenue requirement analysis, some of the key questions for the group would be, do we have the right levels of financial policies, i.e. the reserves are, we're holding aside? Do those adequately meet your objectives for the utilities? Two, when we look at those long-term capital needs, both deferred maintenance as well as future capital investments, what is the preferred method of funding those capital needs? We'll look at cash versus debt or phasing in our, our obligations over several years. And then when we look at the actual rate impacts, acknowledging that we're, we need to be mindful of affordability, what is that preferred stair step of rate increases that, that bring in the, the correct amount of revenue, but also are mindful of, of the impact to our customers' bills? From the cost of service analysis, the key question for the group will be, if we do identify justifiable shifts in the cost of service, should the, those shifts be made all at once in the next year, or should we phase them in over several years? Sometimes we find there's a, a big difference between what a class is charged for service and what it costs for service. If we made that change in one year, it would cause a, a pretty significant rate shock to those customers. And so sometimes it makes sense to still address cost of service, but address it over several years to be mindful of, of the impacts to customers. And then finally, for rate design, um, we, and when we get to that last step, some of the key questions for the group is, will it have a revenue target for a customer class? Does it make sense to apply that percent increase to all the rates, the, the base rate and, and the variable rate? Or are we looking to secure more revenue from a base charge and less revenue from a variable charge? That's that tug and pull I talked about where if you put more money, more, more of the rate component in the base charge, it provides more stable revenue for the utility. If you put more of the recovery in the variable charge, it puts more of the control of the bill and the customer, which is also a good thing, but it does reduce the, the ability to reliably plan for stable revenue. So those are, are the, I, I'm anticipating those are going to be the key questions for the group. I'm going to pause here one last time just to see if there's any questions on these items, and then we'll wrap up with, with next steps.
Matt, this is Julia. I have a, a question, if that's okay, just to, your examples have all been on water, and the rate study is addressing water, storm, sanitary, and streets. Can you just touch briefly on whether or not there's a difference in kind of what you, what you look at for those different utilities? I know that the, the premise is the same, but it might be helpful, counsel, to hear those, those slight differences in that you're looking at those two.
Yeah, yeah, let me, let me, um, let me talk to streets first. So the, the street utility is, is unique amongst public utilities in that there are actually three main revenue sources for the utility, two of which are independent of this rate study. Those two I'm talking to are the state fuel tax and the local fuel tax. Those revenue sources collectively comprise about 70-plus percent of the revenue to fund the utility. The actual street rate only makes up about 20% of the revenue. The challenge with the street utility that I anticipate being is that I don't think we can count on stable growth in, in the fuel tax over long term. And so any deficits being caused in that utility by cost inflation, by deferred maintenance of our streets, really, we need to be counting on that, that's, that street rate to make up the difference. And that street rate is, like I said, a, a, a smaller portion of the overall revenue stream for those utility, for that utility. So I do anticipate some, some pretty big rate, rate numbers for the street utility because of that unique funding, um, composition.
Hey, Matt, do you?
Uh-huh.
Do you have any forecasting for the gas, uh, the gas tax as far as in the future, 10, 20 years, what that looks like?
Yeah, so we, we do have a fuel forecast done by the city of Oregon. And as, and no surprise, it does show a slight decrease each year in, in fuel gallons consumed of, of gas. And that's based on current legislation. I mean, i- if, if policy changes in the future occur at the state or local level where you are taxing, you know, electric vehicles, that could change it. But, but based on, on the current composition of the fuel tax, which is assessed on, on a per gallon basis, overall fuel consumption is projected to decrease. And so that creates a challenge for, for the street utility. For, for the sewer, and, and we do see that trend, albeit it's not as pronounced in the city's, um, fuel tax history, that if anything, it's, it's somewhat stagnant, definitely isn't growing historically in the last several years. And then for the sewer utility, sewer utilities, given the, the capital intensiveness of that utility in that the treatment plant oftentimes is one of the largest assets, most expensive assets the city owns, um, anytime there, there is a replacement or an upgrade to that sewer utility, you'll see the, the capital plans are much more intensive. So adequately planning for that system reinvestment, that rate funded capital element is more critical, I would say, for a sewer utility. Otherwise, um, you, you'll be in a, uh, an, an inevitable spot of trying to finance, you know, a wastewater improvement, a treatment plant, uh, which are tens of billions of dollars. And so any other questions? I just want to talk briefly of next steps. So we'll be presenting the, the results, the draft results of the rate study at our next work session. We're still working on the date, I anticipate it's going to be in the next several weeks. And we'll cover the results. So I want to, I want to prepare the, the group here in advance. I will present the results for all four utilities. We don't present them collectively in terms of one utility rate study because each of them have, must be maintained financially independent of each other. And so we'll be seeing the results for all four, um, and those rate study results will capture the revenue requirement, um, some cost of service results, and then we'll get feedback from the group for rate design. And the reason we want to hold off on redesign a little bit is because we want to make sure that those first two steps are in place. And we need to know what the revenue requirement is recommended by council before we can do some of the, the, the future steps in the other, other parts of the rate study. So based on those draft results, we'll be asking those series of questions to this group and then revising our results based in that direction. And then, Mayor, that concludes the presentation tonight. Happy to answer any questions that we haven't answered yet, otherwise I can turn the time back to Lance.
Okay, well, thank you so very much for now. I'm sure the council will, uh, look forward to these analyses and suggestions over the, in the next year. One question is, maybe it's too easy. What happened, what have, have you folks ever encountered a water system that was overbuilt because of a large commercial user? That is.
A large commercial user that, that is still in the, in the service area or that has left?
I'm sorry, ask that again, please.
Is it, is it, it's overbuilt because the, the, I guess, was it overbuilt on purpose or was it built, but then that person's user left?
Oh, absolutely, on purpose, yeah.
Yeah, what he's referring to, Matt, is I think we talked about to begin with is the Norpac facilities where they took 40 to 60% of our water in the summertime. They're no longer in existence, so we, we've, we've lost that revenue stream. I believe that's what you're talking about, correct, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Lance.
Yeah, yeah, we, 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 uh, we develop rate studies with those kind of, um, those scenarios or, or those things that happen, yeah. Uh-huh. Has there been a question about that?
Well, it may, it may not be relevant at all because it's, uh, you know, the system's still in place, but the use isn't there. And so it's, I'm sure it's been paid for over the years. I don't know when they started using city water. The plant started 100 years ago, and so at least in the last 70 or 80, um, there was a water system that supplied that facility. But it, it may not even be a question, I.
What, what I would like to, what I would say to that, and Matt can speak for himself, but what I will say is we've looked at the cost currently to run the water system. We're not looking at years gone by, we're looking at today, the last four or five years, and the five years in the future, what it takes to run our water distribution system in the ground, in the water plant, um, and those are the costs that they're working with.
And I'll also add, I think it's really important to do these rate studies regularly. You know, if, maybe not annually, but at least every few years because things change. Users change, you might have more, you might have less, you might have had unanticipated costs because things went up, you might have unexpected savings because you didn't need to do something. So it's, I think it's important to do this on a regular basis, and that will help us hopefully avoid major shifts in rates going forward. But I think that from what I understand, we haven't done one in, in a long time, and so we need to do it.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Just if I can comment on Julia's remark, yeah, we, we recommend doing this level rate study at least once every five, two to five years. Doing it more frequently, it's, it's a pretty heavy lift for staff and, and also we'll make sure that if we do it successfully, we shouldn't have to look at, at this level annually. Now, we do recommend at least looking at that revenue requirement piece, that first step on an annual basis, just making sure that the assumptions we're using for cost inflation, that they're, they're still relevant. And so making sure that doing that at least on an annual basis. And what I can say in terms of practice, working with folks from around this area, and once you get into that habit of, of evaluating your rate needs on an annual basis and a more comprehensive look every three to five years, it does make the process of setting rates and providing communication to residents, I think, more fluid. Folks, uh, become, become accustomed to that process, and, and also you have the opportunity to then to engage with interested residents and businesses on a, on a more routine basis on the needs for each utility.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilor Patti.
Yes, go ahead.
Matt, if I may, earlier you made a comment I wanted to turn back to, I just kind of had a question about, you were referencing the state fuel tax and the city fuel tax, meaning about 80% of the revenue for the streets. And it kind of sounded like that maybe was a little uncommon, at least among other cities or municipalities. And I was just wondering, and I'm sure we'll probably get to this down the road here, what, what is typical, if that makes sense?
Yeah, um, I'll say typical for, for Oregon and then nationally. So Oregon is one of the few states needing that, that does provide that flexibility for a local fuel tax. And so in the absence of a fuel tax, um, many local governments outside of Oregon depend exclusively on, um, state fuel taxes and general fund revenue to fund streets. And so you can imagine, uh, the street funding challenges for many communities is, is, is much more severe, that depending on tax dollars, almost exclusively for street maintenance. I will say that in Oregon, the city's fuel tax, the local portion, is on par with many other cities that do have a local fuel tax.
Thank you. Julia, can you make sure those questions that he had posed up there to us get emailed to council?
Yes.
Thanks.
Well, one last quick thing on, again, on, on street maintenance, fuel taxes, there's got to be an allowance for EV. Fuel taxes, there's got to be an allowance for EVs as they become more prevalent. And that'll be just a, like a yearly mileage fee, a yearly tax, so much a mile, something. But people are already trying to work on that, aren't they? I hope.
Yeah, I cannot speak to the specifics on it. I would anticipate that that is, I know the national level and in other states it is something in discussion.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right.
Thanks, Matt.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for being here this evening. Okay?
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, good night. Okay, shall we take a minute or go right to, wait till seven. Let's wait till seven.
I think that you should wait till seven because that's when it's advertised and announced that the meeting will start. So this would probably be an opportunity to go to the restroom, recess, stretch your legs.
We have to do what we're supposed to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, we'll wait till seven. Turn the sound on, that's even better. It is the nineteenth of December. Council is present. Counselor Hook is joining us vicariously. Zumile, how about that? And welcome to her and welcome to everyone tonight. Yeah, this is, this is the end of something, which is probably a good thing, but that's all right. So let's go ahead and start with a flag salute, please, if you'd join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Over the many years, I have liked to reflect on that idea of, in the pledge, that indivisible, the idea of something not being able to be divided. And yet we find ourselves with much division among us, hopefully not here, but seems like everywhere around us. So maybe we work on that. Anyway, under announcements, are there any additions to the agenda?
Mayor, I do have an addition to the agenda. It's going to be Agenda Item Eight B.
Which one?
It's, you haven't seen it yet. It's going to be Agenda Item Eight B, Resolution Ten Forty-nine. And I will read it out loud and into the record when we get to that part of the agenda.
Ten B?
Eight.
Eight B? Oh, eight. Oh, eight B, okay. All right, thank you. Anything else? No? Declarations of ex-party contact, conflict of interest, bias, organized mayhem, none? Okay, good, good, thank you. Any appointments this evening? No? Okay, how about public comment? Do I have any public comment? All right. Then, how about the consent agenda, which is December fifth, City Council work session minutes? Hey, sit down out there. December fifth, City Council regular session minutes. Resolution number Ten Forty-seven, accepting the abstract of election results from the November eighth, twenty twenty-two election. And Resolution number Ten Forty-eight, establishing a homeless task force and appointing members to that. Action on the consent agenda, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'll offer a motion to accept the consent agenda as submitted.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patti. I second that motion.
All right. Motion of the second to accept the consent agenda as presented. Tammy, would you poll the council, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Can I, can I ask a question about the consent agenda?
Normally, if you have a question about something that you want to discuss that's on the consent agenda, you would remove that item from the consent agenda and discuss it?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
In consideration of Counselor Ort, I will remove my motion to accept the consent agenda.
I rescind my second.
All right, then we, the consent agenda is on the floor, but we have discussion. Go ahead, please.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. You have the floor.
A question was brought up earlier about, like, having possible, oh my gosh, what am I, what am I saying?
Mr. Mayor, I think what Counselor Ort is asking, if we can pull Resolution Ten Forty-eight for a second. Is that what you're asking, in consideration of the question we had?
Okay, yes. Can I, can we pull, I'd like to make a motion to pull Resolution Number Ten Forty-eight from the consent agenda.
And then we would do that as the first item under general business is what my recommendation would be, unless you want to?
That's fine.
Go ahead.
We just, we just want to pull that Item D, that Resolution Ten Forty-eight? That was the motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion of the second to pull that item from the consent agenda. Then we should go ahead and approve the rest of it?
Yep. Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
I'll offer a motion to approve Consent Agenda Six, A through C as submitted.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patti. Seconded.
Okay, a motion of the second then to approve Consent Agenda Items A, B, C, and, A, B, and C for, yeah, for a vote. So let's do that, Tammy, please, on that.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Okay, five zero.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. What do we do with Item D then?
So it's, it's up to council. You could move it till general business unless you want to just move and discuss it now. I would recommend moving it to general business because that's where the general business is and then let the presentations occur, but.
Can we just do that by common sense consent?
Yes, so basically your general business's agenda is going to be A, or actually it will be Resolution Ten Forty-eight, and then it will be presentation by me, and then Resolution Ten Forty-nine.
Okay. So I'm writing here for just my own, number Ten Forty-eight, and then C. CM, okay, all right. We thrash along here. Under Presentations, a community partner, teen center. Do you need to introduce that now?
Sure, I'll introduce Katrina Cassis, who's the director, executive director of the teen center. If you want to come on up and speak to the council as a reminder. I think, I think this is just your second community partner update. And so as such, I've asked her to come and just share a little bit about who they are, what they do, and give you an opportunity to meet them and ask any questions.
Okay, very good. Welcome. And go ahead.
Katrina, can you push the button on your microphone? There you go, perfect.
The one that says push?
Yeah.
There we go, there we go.
Hi, everyone. I'm Katrina Cassis. I'm the new director at the teen center. I started in June. You all know about the Saniam Teen Center behind the middle school. You all know where it's at. Have any of you visited the teen center? I would encourage you to do so, and I'd be happy to give you a tour. It's not that big. It will take all of five minutes to give you the tour. But you can see what we're talking about when we're talking about the teen center. So the teen center started in twenty nineteen. But New Growth Ministries, that started the teen center, started back in two thousand and eleven to help teens that needed a place, a safe place, and families that needed a safe place for their teens. But in twenty eighteen, I believe it was the police department that approached New Growth and asked for assistance for those teens that didn't have a safe place. As you know, Stateon has become a place where there's been more homeless and runaway teens. And so New Growth got involved. And I'm not sure exactly how it came about. I know the city bought the property, and I know the house is there, but I'm not sure if the city approached New Growth or New Growth approached the city. But either way, here we are. We have the house. Like I said, if you've seen it, it's really a home away from home for the teens that are there. They started out strong in twenty nineteen. We were filled to capacity. Our capacity is like twenty-six. We have all different variety of teens that come from seventh through twelfth grade. Some have been there since the beginning. There's been a couple there this year that have been there since the doors opened. However, as you know, with COVID, it slowed things down a lot. It slowed things down with not, with having to close our doors to the teens, but also to have volunteers there. When I started in June of this year, I'm the first full-time staff they've ever had. So there's a lot that we're learning along the way. But it's also us getting those, getting our capacity back up. So my goal is to get back up. We started, when I started in June, we were getting three to five students. At the beginning of the year, we were getting five to seven. And in December, we were getting nine and eleven. And as of last week, we were up to twenty-one students. So that's a big yay for us. It's exciting. I know the kids that come are the kids that need a safe place to be. We've had more volunteers that have come. Our social media is growing. And we are just grateful for the partnership we have with the city because the city saw the need, the police department saw the need, and New Growth Ministries was able to fill that need. So I am so appreciative of the partnership that we have. I come from eight years of social work down in Lynn County, but I've raised my family here. We live in sublimity. We've been a part of the community for the past ten years. I grew up in Almsville. So, I mean, this area is home, and it's just, it's nice to be a part of it and be a part of watching, seeing things that I needed when I was younger and maybe some of you needed when you were younger, and just knowing that we can help some of those teens to have that safe place that we didn't have growing up.
Katrina, can you speak to what happens at the teen center?
Sure, so currently we're open three days a week. Again, we have one, one paid staff and the rest is volunteers. We are open three to six, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. With our capacity at twenty-one last week, I'm hoping to open that up one more day a week. Also, we have three new volunteers, so that should be able to happen. We're open three to six. We have snacks, after-school snacks for teens. We help with homework. We've helped with job resumes and applications. We can help with college applications. Since I've been there, I have not had that opportunity, but we do offer that. Some of our volunteers are tutors, and so they can help with homework. We have a computer room where kids can work on any kind of homework stuff. We also have an art room. We've done a couple of cooking classes. We have lots of board games. We play games with the teens. So teens usually arrive from three to three forty-five, depending on if they're coming from middle school or high school. And then from four to four forty-five, we'll either have some kind of class, such as a cooking class, or homework help, or sometimes we'll have a movie time. Sometimes it's just open because it's kind of a drop-in center. And then from four forty-five to five, we start getting ready for dinner. Five o'clock, we have dinner, which gratefully, we get a lot of our meals from community members who sign up and provide those meals. So that's expense, an expense that sometimes we cover meals, but a lot of times we're thankful that the community steps in and provides those meals for our teens. And then five thirty to six, they kind of have free time. We start cleaning up, and they go home at six. And they either get a ride or they walk home, whatever it is for them.
Mr. Mayor, I have a clarifying question, if I may. Katrina, thank you so much for this presentation. I actually have been really interested in this matter, and it's helpful to understand what this kind of looks like. But I just want to flesh something out real quick. You mentioned something about twenty-one students. What does a student look like? Is that like how many drop-in visits you have in a month? Or is that just a continuous youth that's coming to your facility? Is that what that looks like?
Yeah, so twenty-one students was, is how many we had that day. So we have been getting seven to ten regularly. We have, I don't remember the exact count because we had several new students that last day that we didn't get registrations for. So they're allowed to drop in the first day. In order to come back a second day, we have to have a student registration. And currently, we have about twenty-five registrations this year. Again, there's a few that, there were several that came in this last week, so I'm not sure what our exact count is, but about twenty-five registered.
Cool. Thank you for explaining that.
Ma'am, Katrina, what's the registration process? First day's free, but they have to register the second? What's that about?
So their registration is just their parents go on the website and they register the student, giving us like birthday, contact information for both themselves, the student and the parents. There's a code of conduct that the kids and the parents sign, just kind of showing, you know, if you're coming to the teen center, there's certain respect and responsibilities we expect. I personally feel that it's more important that they're there than not there. So if there's something that is a struggle for them, maybe it's something they don't know from home. So I'm going to sit down with them, and I'm going to be a little more hands-on with them to help them learn what respect and rules look like.
Well, another question. What, the relative isolation of that place, is that, how much of a handicap is that?
The location?
Well, it's out on the edge of town.
The location is perfect for the middle school.
Middle school.
Because it's, it's right around the corner. The handicap that I'm running into currently would actually be for the school board, not the city board. But it would be that, since we're within a mile of the high school, we do not currently get bus transportation from the high school to the teen center. And so with this perfect Oregon weather, we lose some of our high schoolers because that's kind of a distance to walk when it's raining. So I'm working on that. My avenue currently is because I have two parents that have talked to me about it, and they have a kid with a disability. So I'm going to see if we can get that loophole with the disability and be able to get a bus for the disability to get there.
City's doing some maintenance in the area. Probably doesn't affect day-to-day operations, but maintenance on the teen center itself and the barn. Any thoughts on that?
Well, I've met Kendall, I believe. He comes out there, and when he's out in the area, he says hello. Mostly, I've seen them working on the barn, but I don't know that I've seen them working on the house yet. But they have, they keep me in the loop. They let me know when it's going to be happening. So it hasn't interfered at all. Just friendly faces in the neighborhood.
Any of them see how much money the city's spending on that maintenance?
No, once in a while they'll blow the leaves off the porch for me, but I haven't, I haven't been sent a bill or seen a bill to you guys for blowing the leaves.
You won't see a bill. It is a budget item, about twenty-six thousand dollars.
Of keeping it maintained?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if that's annually or if there's just a one, a one-time thing.
It's a one-time thing.
We could certainly have Lance fill us in. I was going to say, not, not now. I wanted to really focus the partner, community partner, on what they do and who they are. I believe the second meeting in January, we are scheduled to have a discussion on the teen center lease. So you'll be getting an issue paper that gives you a little bit more background on kind of the history of that site and the teen center and the lease agreement to get some feedback from council on that. Where, you know, potentially the, you know, I know that part of that is we're, it's, it's our structure. We're maintaining the roof and things like that because it's a structure on our property. So, yeah, that's why we're working on that, is my understanding.
I am glad you brought that up because I do know, I am grateful. We do lease the property, I believe, for a dollar annually from you guys. And so I know that you guys see the need for us, or you would have not offered that. And so I'm grateful because I do see that partnership. And also, when it, when we did get it three years ago, or I guess four years ago, And also, when we did get it three years ago, or I guess four years ago, of course, it was an older manufactured home. And as a manufactured home, it didn't quite fit the needs for us. So we did have community volunteers come in who did make it possible to make it into a teen center, to open it up. So they did a lot of that work. I don't remember the names because I wasn't here at that time, but our community really rallied behind. We've made a handicap accessible and opened up all the rooms. So there's been a lot of work that we've done on that building as well.
What other thoughts, questions? Comments? Save it for the next go-around, right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Katrina.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, let's see. All right, and CFM advocates?
Yes, so I'll introduce Michael Skipper. He is a federal lobbyist with CFM Advocates who I have been working with. I might be stealing all of his thunder, but, you know, I certainly know that when I first started infrastructure and funding infrastructure was pretty key and critical. I had actually worked with him at the city of Sherwood and saw the success that they were able to help Sherwood with. And so I wanted to see what he could do for Sherwood. So we've been meeting with him, and he actually helped me organize my day in DC when I was back there on vacation. So I'll just leave it at that. I wanted you to meet him and hear directly from him on kind of what he's been doing and give you an opportunity to ask questions.
Thank you, Julia. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Michael Skipper with CFM Advocates. I've had the opportunity to meet a few of you, but I'm glad to be out here. It's always great to be in Oregon and out of DC. I will try and speed through this relatively quickly in the interest of everybody's time. I know everybody didn't come here to listen to me talk. So if you do want me to slow down, or if you have any questions, feel free to jump in, but happy to answer any questions you may have. I do want to say from the outset, I and CFM were thrilled to be working with Staton. We're an Oregon-based company. I'm an Oregonian, so it's really fun to work with communities that I grew up coming to, I know well, played plenty of basketball and football games in Staton growing up. So it's a thrill to be working together in this capacity as well. So in terms of what we're going to be talking about, I think the primary purpose of this presentation is to introduce myself, our firm, let you know a little bit about what we do, who we are, and then talk about some of the work we've done to date around your 2023 federal agenda and get any input you may have on that. So just keep going. So CFM, like I mentioned, we're an Oregon-based company. We have an office in Portland, Oregon, is kind of our headquarters, but we have small offices in Salem, Oregon, Vancouver, Washington, and Washington DC. The entire 32 years of our firm's existence, we have had an office in Washington DC where we've really developed an expertise in helping municipal governments in the Pacific Northwest not only navigate the federal bureaucracy and red tape, but help them secure federal funding for a lot of their local initiatives. So in addition to municipal governments, we also represent a range of transit agencies, nonprofits, water districts, a lot of public and nonprofit clients, infrastructure-related and things like that. Terms of our team, so while I'm the only one here, we do have a deep bench of really skilled and qualified lobbyists. Joel Rubin there, he is our federal affairs partner. He's based in DC as well. And then Kirby Garrett is our other person in DC, along with me and Joel. Kirby came to our office about six years ago from Congressman, former Congressman Walden's office. And just to talk a little bit about myself, I guess, too, I should say that. As I mentioned, I grew up in Oregon, pretty close by in Yemhill County over in Carlton. Graduated from Oregon State University, started out in Oregon politics, working on a series of campaigns before ultimately landing at CFM in our Salem office. I worked in the state legislature, representing a range of public, nonprofit, and corporate clients over three legislative sessions in Salem. Before about seven years ago, I moved out to DC and joined our federal team, where I lead a lot of our work with municipal clients in Oregon and Washington. The other three folks you see there, Paige, Katie, and David, they are all actually based out of our Vancouver, Washington office. So our team is kind of split between the Pacific Northwest and DC. Me, Joel, and Kirby, who I'm sure you'll meet, we're out here pretty regularly, about once every two or three months. I've already met with Julia and her team a few times out here in Staton in the past few months. But those three can be really helpful for on-the-ground stuff in terms of when Joel, Kirby, and I can't be out here, they can help you with meetings with member of Congress, tours for their staff, ribbon, ribbon cuttings, things like that. Like I said, they're a really, really qualified group of people. Almost all of them have worked for members of the Oregon and Washington Congressional Delegation for years. As a result of that, we have really strong, trusted, personal relationships with the congressional delegation and their staff. And our record of success is really something we're proud of, particularly when it comes to municipal governments. So over the past three years, we've helped our municipal governments in Oregon and Washington secure over $145 million in competitive federal grants. And just in fiscal year 2022 alone, we helped our 20-something-odd municipal clients secure 27 congressionally-directed spending or appropriation projects totaling more than $40 million. So it's something we're really proud of. It's something, not to, I'm not too bashful typically, but I think we're really good at it, and we're excited to work with Staton on it as well. And here's kind of, I hinted at it, but here's kind of an overview of the services we provide and are providing to Staton. So the grants is the first. There's basically two direct funding streams that cities can go after from the federal government. Grants is one of them. And we work with our communities from beginning to end throughout the grant process. We know that the Portlands, the Seattle's, the Chicago's of the world, they have whole teams dedicated to this full-time in-house where they write grants 24/7. We know, we've, our clients have found it really valuable that we work from you, with you from beginning to end, from identifying projects, marrying them with a specific grant program, and then helping you write and ultimately submit the application. Some of these grant programs are really lengthy, 10, 20, 30-page applications that smaller communities just don't have the resources, and it really blocks you out from going after those funds. We kind of help fill that void and help level the playing field for you to secure some of that funding against some of those larger cities. Appropriations, this is a relatively new and particularly exciting opportunity for communities the size of Staton. It's called congressionally-directed spending now, but you've probably heard of them as earmarks. There was a 10-year hiatus back in 2010 when House Republicans regained the majority. They got rid of earmarks for over 10 years. They were brought back last year in a kind of reformed, more transparent process, and it's a bipartisan process now as well. Just last, or two weeks ago now, the House Republican Caucus, even though they regained the majority, they decided to keep the congressionally-directed spending or earmark process. By more than two-thirds of their caucus voted to support it. So they, it's really, it's a really effective way for members of Congress to direct funding to the communities they represent. I think a lot of members found out over the last 10 years that you're, they're essentially ceding a lot of the power of the purse to the administration when they get rid of the earmarks or congressionally-directed spending, because then all of the funding goes through these competitive grant programs that are administered by the Department of Transportation, Department of Agriculture, EPA, all the federal bureaucrats and secretaries of those agencies are the ones doling out all the funding. This kind of gives a lot more power to the individual members of Congress to direct funding to their communities. Similar to grants, we work with you from beginning to end. As I mentioned, I've already been out in Staton a few times, meeting with Julia and your department teams, where we've already kind of narrowed down a list of projects we're going to focus on in 2023 in both the grant earmark space. I'll get to that in a minute with your draft agenda. But we, that process opens up in March of next year, but we've already identified the projects we want to submit. We've already began filling out the applications because we know what questions are going to be asked, start gathering all the materials. And we've also started our advocacy efforts as well. Julia, as she mentioned, she's been out in DC where we met with the congressional delegation. And we also had members of Senator Merkley and Senator Wyden staff out here in Staton, where we had a great meeting talking about your projects and gave them a tour of some of your priorities as well around town. So those are the two big services that you're going to see directly from us for a community the size of Staton. But we also work with, we coordinate closely with National League of Cities, US Conference of Mayors to identify any legislative opportunities, any, for you to support or oppose that may impact your communities. We can also help with any local, state, and federal coordination on any projects or applications. A big thing also is relationship building. As I mentioned, we've already had a series of meetings with the members of Congress and their staff. We find it really important and valuable for you to have close personal relationships with them as well, in addition to us. So we like to get you in the room as much as possible. And you're also, while I think we're somewhat good at it, you're also typically much better advocates for your own priorities. You know them, you know them better than us, we do, and you know how big of an impact they'll make to your communities. And that brings me to your 2023 draft federal agenda. I do want to emphasize, this is a draft. This is just kind of the list of projects we've, after our series of meetings, we have narrowed down that have kind of a direct nexus to either an eligible earmark account or federal grant program, not only that they would be eligible for, but we think they would be competitive for. But I'm also interested to hear any feedback. We do want to kind of have, this is a living document that can and does change throughout the year as different priorities come up, different grant programs are created. So you do have an opportunity, and we would love for you to have any input you want on it. But this is where things stand right now. And I'm not going to go into these too much in detail because you all definitely know these projects better than I do. But these are the, these are the five kind of projects. A big one focuses around the west side industrial development. I believe you have about 80 acres on the west side of town that is kind of prime industrial land that could support high-wage jobs here in Staton. But a barrier over the years has been the cost of upgrading the infrastructure in order for developers to come in there. That's one thing the federal government and members of Congress love, infrastructure projects that support economic development. So we're going to be targeting a few different funding accounts for both the roundabout and some regional stormwater improvements that will open up that land and make it more cost-effective for private developers to come to Staton. The other two, excuse me, the other two wastewater and water projects, these are really great earmark requests. Your Senator Merkley in particular, he's the chairman of the appropriations Subcommittee that deals with these, deals with water and sewer projects. So he has an outsized influence on directing some of that money back to Oregon. So we want to make sure to give him two quality options, and I think we have that here. The wastewater project would replace some aging and undersized sewer main line throughout town, and the Jettersway Force Main upsizing is exactly what it sounds like. And then the State and Safe Streets Initiative is a, is an interesting project. So I guess I should have said, this is a, just to back up a little bit, this is a fantastic time to be actively engaged at the federal level. There is just an unprecedented, unprecedented amount of opportunities for communities, especially the size of Staton, to secure federal funding. Just the bipartisan infrastructure law alone that was enacted last year is a $1.2 trillion bill over five years. So it's not just next year, you have five goes at this. It created dozens of new grant programs, most of which you can access directly. In addition to that, the restoration of earmarks, there is just an array of opportunities out there that we're excited to work with you on. So the State and Safe Streets, this is a result of a new program that was created in the infrastructure package called the Safe Streets and Roads for All Program. It essentially funds what it sounds like. And we believe it can address a lot of the deferred maintenance throughout town while also improving pedestrian and bicycle facilities. You can basically, once you have a plan together, you can seek funding for an array of improvements throughout town to, from resurfacing to, like I said, mid-block pedestrian crossings, bicycle lanes, sidewalks. So we think, one of the first things I heard when I met with Julia was the deferred maintenance throughout town. The streets are in poor condition, and there's not a lot of pedestrian and bicycle facilities. So we think this is a unique opportunity to get a pretty large chunk of money to address a lot of that. We're excited about that. And just, when we talk about all these, when we talk about all this funding and all this money coming out of the federal government, one reason we're happy to see Staton engaged in it is the way we see it is, this, at the end of the day, is federal tax dollars that are collected from you and your residents. So where we see we're helpful is we work with you to try and bring as much of that back to Staton as we can to benefit you and your residents and make the, make the community a better place. But that is, I tried my best to go quickly. I think I accomplished that. Sorry if I spoke too fast, but that's all I got for you today. I'm happy to answer any questions, but again, appreciate you taking the time.
Before you guys get to questions, I just wanted to note the projects and the amount that we're targeting, I just want to stress, that is not the amount of, that is not the project cost. That is the amount that Michael and his team thinks we will most likely be successful at if we're successful. So we could spend way more than $3 million on safe streets around Sherwood, or Sherwood, gosh darn it. I haven't done that in a while. Staton. You know, as well as the roundabout is more than $4 million. So just wanted to highlight that, that, but trying to strategically ask for as much as we can ask for, for the projects.
And I'll also say, these, as Julia mentioned, these numbers are pretty oriented to the earmark process. There's not a, there's not a formal cap on how much money you can get, but typically, we found $4 million is kind of the max, and under $3 million is the ideal. So that's what all these numbers represent, as Julia mentioned. But there are, for the roundabout, for the safe streets, we can, in the grant process, we can go after more funding. Just made more sense to kind of list the earmark amounts because that's kind of what we're going to, what's going to be happening first in early March.
Just real quick, I thought I understood this earmarks thing, but you guys get in front of them instead of just biting off pieces of these big appropriations as they come available?
Yes. It's, it's, we've found it to be, it's basically, we find it to be more effective. You can wait until the application process opens and just submit your request and hope for the best, but what we try to do is give you a competitive advantage. So we not only start working on the application now, but we start our outreach to the congressional delegation now. It's, I kind of, it's similar to applying for a job, right? You want your resume to jump off the page when the interviewer looks at it. When we're working with the congressional delegation, we've already told them all about your projects multiple times in some cases. So when they see Staton's project come through, they know about it, they know the benefits, they know any pitfalls or what to look out for. So it's just a, it kind of helps you get to the finish line, I'd say. Because I should say, over two-thirds of earmark requests that are submitted, especially to Senate offices, aren't funded. So it's a very competitive process still, so you do kind of want to get every advantage you can. Even though, to the congressional delegation's credit, they would want to fund every project they receive, but there, there's 435 members of Congress that all have their own priorities as well, so.
Good deal. All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Other questions, thoughts for, for Mike?
All right. Thank you again. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, under, under general, general business again, Resolution 1048. Go ahead. Whoever, whoever wants to start on that.
I'll take a stab at it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Councilor, thank you for calling the attention to that. I thought this might be an agenda item specifically because it was recognizing people that had come step forward to serve on a committee, and I think in the past, appointments have been, have been communicated a little bit closer, I think. So thanks for pointing that out. Mr. Mayor, my question for the resolution on the homeless task force is, I really want to acknowledge the people that stepped forward to serve on that committee. Fantastic response to the issue. I want to understand that it is a year-long commitment, and I want to make sure the members that have been appointed to do that recognize that. And having said that, I think it might be prudent for us to potentially look at appointing some members in waiting, alternatives, if you will, in case the other members are not able to fulfill the commitment. So I guess we could consider that tonight, or maybe I can deal with it in the next year.
Do you want to?
Responses? Thoughts?
Obviously, it's up to council on what they want to do this evening. It certainly would not be hard at all in the coming weeks to identify a slate of alternates if you wanted to do that. So you could do, take action this evening and appoint and establish the task force, and then we could tackle that in the new year with potential alternates. Yeah, I agree. It was an amazing slate of candidates, and, you know, I think there are people that were definitely disappointed to not be recommended for appointment. So I think the more we can open it up and include would be great.
So, ma'am, if I heard you correctly, you're suggesting that they wait and, as needed, bring in other people as alternates? Do that next year?
Well, next year is only a few weeks away, so that was part, yeah. Yeah, I would recommend, just because we want to get started on reaching out to the people that are appointed to figure out availability and start getting meetings scheduled so that we're not waiting, you know, two more know, two more weeks or, or longer before we establish it. Go ahead and establish the task force. But then, you know, in January sometime, we could potentially discuss having an alternate list if that is what council so chooses.
That works. I just wanted to make sure we acknowledged that. So.
Okay. So we need a motion on Resolution 1048.
Mr. Mayor.
If you folks are agreeable with that.
Is it, is it possible to read the folks that are actually be on the committee?
Sure.
Because the other folks that have been selected, everyone's been informed, right, at this point?
Yes. Yeah, I have, they have been notified that they are recommended for appointment. They knew that you were taking action this evening. I can read that out loud. The task force members would be comprised of the resident representatives would be Cassie Brown, Tricia Frisell, Stephen Halverson, Mark McDonald, Jared Ulgen, and Julie Whitehurst. The business representatives would be Ken Carey, Carey Sessoms, Sonia Percy, and Adam McFarland. There would be a representative from the San Am Service Integration Team, Kim Dwyer. There would be a representative from Arches. The staff member is yet to be, sorry, yet to be assigned. But that would be basically a staff member that they assign. And then there will need to be two city council representatives, which could be volunteered or appointed by separate motion or separate decision.
Okay. Thank you. So what would you folks like to do with that?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counsel Patty. I was just going to make a suggestion that maybe we figure out the council members and the alternates in that same motion, and then we pass that next year. I don't know. But I like that idea of at least having alternates available. I think that would be helpful, especially if somebody couldn't serve any further or something like that. Good, good idea.
Now, time-wise, what are you thinking, Counselor, on that?
I guess I would go with whatever staff can get together and get on the agenda. So that's just my suggestion.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counsel Hook.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Yeah. So I, I think what I heard Counselor Patty saying, and if, if not, then I guess I'll, I'll say it, is that the council, the counselors, it would be best to have them selected kind of with the alternates later on. That way, like, the new counselor can have an opportunity to be a part of that if they like to be, as well as anyone that's appointed into the position that would be vacant. But Counselor Quigley is vacating that because he's going to be mayor. So he's elected mayor.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So what would you folks like to do with that? There's going to be, and it's a good point, there's a vacant council position and a new counselor coming on in January. They might, we want to be part of this. This might be something to hand off to the new ones. So you folks don't have to volunteer for everything?
Mr. Mayor.
And you don't have to volunteer for anything. I like that. I like that. Okay, go ahead, please, Counselor.
I just want to confirm what Counsel Patty was talking. I think that's what you're saying, right? What Counsel Hook brought up?
Yeah, essentially.
Yeah. I think that's prudent.
Okay. So what to, what to do with that tonight, if anything?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1048 establishing the homeless task force and appointing members.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counsel Patty. I second that motion.
Okay. Was that a second, Counselor?
It was.
Okay. A motion and a second. To approve Resolution 1048 establishing homeless task force and appointing members. And, and there'll be more. Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
More just a thought, but we do have some open positions on different commissions and count, and boards for the city council. And so if any of the people, they're on the, can they do more than one? Yeah, either on the task force or that didn't get on the task force, take a look at those and see if it would be, if you'd like to serve on one of those, be part of the discussion that way.
Yes. And we, when I notified the people that were not on the list to be recommended, I thanked them very much, obviously, for applying, but also did inform them of all the vacant positions and provided them a copy of our board and commission application form. So.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Shall we go to a vote on that then? Tammy, please?
Counselor Hook?
There we go.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. All right. Thank you, folks. Outgoing council member recognition. Ma'am?
So this will be, this part, I think, will be relatively brief, but we just, we have a certificate of appreciation. Counselor Hook, I'm sorry that you're not here to see it in person, but we'll make sure that you get it. Counselor Hook's certificate of appreciation says, certificate of appreciation presented to Paige Hook in recognition of your contributions and service as a state and city council member from January 2019 to December 2022. It's signed by me and Mayor Porter. And we'll make sure that you got that. And then we have one for Mayor Porter. And I'll, I guess I'll read it rather than making him read it. Certificate of appreciation presented to Henry A. Porter in recognition of your contributions and service as mayor and city council member from 1974 through 2022. Presented December 19, 2022. And it's signed by myself and all the council members except for, sorry, Counselor Hook, we weren't able to get to you before you headed out of town. But we'll make sure that you're able to sign this too, if you're able. And I'll pass this over to the mayor and see if anybody wants to say anything.
Oh, thank you. And thank you, folks. Yeah. Yeah. Some political types hate to see term limits. They want to, they want this to be a terminal disease. And yet, there's a time when term limits are, are a good thing. And I can certainly testify to that. So thank all of you. And it's been, it's been fun and frustrating and fun. And a life. There we go. Okay. Item C. Ma'am?
1049, Resolution 1049. I'm glad this is your last council meeting, otherwise you would kill me. So Resolution 1049, a resolution naming the Stateon Dog Park, the Henry A. Porter Dog Park, in recognition of Mayor Porter's service and dedication to the city. Whereas Mayor Henry A. Porter has served the community of Stateon from 1974 to 2022 with only a few gaps in service as city council member or mayor. Whereas during his most recent tenure as mayor, the dog park was envisioned and built with his dedication and support. Whereas the dog park has never been officially named. Whereas Henry Porter has a well-known love for dogs, as we can see this evening, including his prior dog Sadie and current dog Gus. And whereas the council wants to thank and honor Henry Porter for his many years of service and dedication to the city.
Is that your name on it?
Now, therefore be it resolved that the state and city council names the Stateon Community Dog Park, the Henry A. Porter Dog Park. Staff is directed to officially change the signage of the dog park accordingly. Furthermore, staff is encouraged to seek opportunities and funds to make park amenities in Henry Porter's honor, such as additional benches, dog obstacle elements, watering stations, et cetera. This resolution shall become effective upon its adoption by the state and city council. And I just wanted to show if this resolution is passed by council. We didn't, we weren't able to get the sign actually in today, but this is what the sign will look like.
Whoa.
At the Henry A. Porter.
Very nice. Thank you. If it passes, that'll even be better. Ah, thank you. I can say, if it passes, it'll even be better.
If it passes, then we'll see.
Geez. Oh.
So does that mean you need a, an emotion?
Well, I think, I guess. It says adopt, it's a business item, adopted by.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would gladly make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1049 as presented tonight.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counsel Patty. I'll second that motion.
All right. Thank you. Thank you both. All right. Any discussion? And so, Tammy?
This is, this is Counselor Hook.
Oh, and Counselor Hook?
Yeah. I just, I wanted to just discuss the fact that I thought that that was absolutely beautiful thing to bring forward for the council to show appreciation for all of the years of service that you have put in. And I will absolutely be voting yes on that. And it's well, well deserved. And you've done so much for our community. And I'm very grateful for it.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor, very much. Does everyone know how that happened? That dog park?
Tell us.
No, the city gave us $25,000 and said we had a year to raise the other 25. This was not universally acclaimed at the time. There were thoughts of using that property for a new city hall fire, not fire, police department building, clear across there from third, yeah, from third over to fourth and on the other side of fourth, that whole space there. And that didn't happen. And, and so we proposed a dog park there, but we had to find another $25,000 in a year. And that was kind of a scramble. And we did and made it happen. And I guess it's pretty well used. I take him down there once in a while, he takes me down there once in a while. When he was younger, when he would get free, he'd zip out of city hall, I'd take him in there. And the door would open, somebody'd come in to pay a water bill, and he'd take off down the street and over to the dog park. We could always catch him over there because we knew where he'd go. But some good times there. But, but thank you. Thank you very much. So can we go to a vote on this now? All right. Tammy?
Counselor McDonald?
Absolutely, yes.
Counselor Quigley? Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Hook? Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Thank you, folks. All right. Got that one. And communications from city staff?
I do have a few. Sorry, I wanted to just sort of like do that and then go straight to desserts, which we have some desserts for you guys. Counselor Hook, you're not here, so you don't get a dessert. We'll save one for you. Sorry. But I do have a few. I had emailed council, I believe, last week on the state Oregon Mayors Association is pushing for, or advocating for funds for ongoing funding for supporting cities dealing with homelessness, but also potentially some capital project funding. And there is a strong push for us to ask for some capital project funding. Initially, I was hesitant because we didn't have the task force and we didn't know exactly what we might want to ask for. But it sounded like it was a, if you don't ask now, you won't get anything. And so I emailed council with some ideas. And I wanted to just see if there's anything else to add, or if you have any concerns about me adding, you know, basically doing a letter. I don't know if we'll get any money, but doing a letter asking for some funding. The projects that were identified is potentially acquisition of an ATV or some other, something like that, and construction of a storage facility for police and public works crews to be able to get out into the parks and address the issues caused by homelessness out there. Construction of restroom facilities at a park or an expansion of restroom facilities at a park. Costs and supplies potentially with warming and cooling centers. There's, I actually Googled, there's like a packet where you can get cots and supplies and things like that. So something like that. And then there'd need to be a place to store that. And then improved parking lots and parking lot security cameras and lighting. And I, I think that would be a great project. I would ask for some input potentially on locations that would be the most beneficial. And perhaps Chief Johns and I could work offline if that's not something you guys have specific thoughts about tonight. But I'd love to hear if there's anything on this list that you don't think we should ask for, or anything that you want to make sure that we add to the list of potential projects.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Julia, clarifying question on the, on the restroom facilities. Is that something that we, my mind immediately went to Pioneer Park, but you just said that we could maybe construct them at different parks? Maybe even at our, could we use the money at the Mill Creek?
Yeah, potentially.
Potentially there, or like North, is it North Slope? Never remember the name of it. Like, that's a park?
By the church.
By the church, that doesn't have a restroom facility. It's kind of out there. And then my, my thoughts on the parking lot cameras, that's not my favorite one personally. I just don't, you can never really tell, like, who's on the camera for some reason whenever you need to actually see somebody. And then what do we do when we find someone if they do something wrong? That's a problem that we've been having, is what do we, what action can we actually take? So I'd like to see if we could get some funds for a different project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
So Julia, this is potential money. It's nothing that's set in stone yet.
Absolutely, that's.
This is basically the mayor's, Oregon Mayors Association going to legislature to advocate for, to lobby for this type of funding. It's based on population of the city. I have a list at my house of stuff that I'd like to discuss. I think one of the things that I'd like to see, and we've heard it from Captain, or Chief Johns, is when we have interaction with those folks, that we have to store their belongings for a while. So I'd really like to see the property room with the PD taking a look at that to see if we have capacity issues, if we can try to expand it a little bit to make it more manageable and user-friendly. But I really want to see, in my point, I want to see some actual tangible results with the money and not necessarily spread around too much. I would, I want it to address the situation that we're, that we're tasked with. So maybe that'd be an initiative for the, for the task force. And I'll send you that list of stuff when I get, this week.
Yeah. And my, I don't, that's one of the reasons why I wasn't sure what to ask for. I think what I'll ask the League of Oregon Cities person that I was talking to is if we ask for a certain amount for certain things, are we bound to just those things or can we modify? Because I, I just want to make sure we have a list so that it demonstrates the need. And I think that's part of what they're wanting to do is to understand the magnitude of these one-time capital projects. I don't know that it means that you're going to get it for those specific things. So I'll clarify that a little bit more.
Julia, I may not have heard it, but was, was personnel on there?
Personnel is not on the one-time piece. What they're proposing is allocating a certain amount to jurisdictions based on their population, which based on their formula, Stateon would get about $333,000 a year, if we actually got that. And that could be used to support dealing with homelessness, which I believe could be personnel. So additional public works, additional police officers, things like that.
Yeah. The portable, portable shower facility?
Potentially. If that is, if, if, I mean, those are the types of things that potentially, you know, could come later, but I don't know where, where we're going.
Okay.
Exactly.
I'd hope it'd be on a list. If we're, this is part of our community from now on that we can. If we're, this is part of our community from now on that we can address
Right.
some of those basic issues, yeah, as well as the ones you've identified. Yeah, okay. Others? Other thoughts?
So this is helpful feedback. I appreciate it. This will help me refine some things.
What else?
I also just wanted to point out, the National Weather Service, I was on a webinar today with an update from the National Weather Service about temperatures coming later this week, Thursday, Friday. You've probably been hearing about it on the news. Temperatures are going to be below freezing, probably Thursday going into Friday, potentially for freezing rain. And I just wanted to point out, I talked to Lance, and his crews are already preparing for that potentiality. So I just wanted to acknowledge that we're, we're watching it, staying on top of it, and if you have any questions, you can let me or Lance know. I wanted to acknowledge Susanna is in the back of the room, Susanna Sabraja, it's her last council meeting this evening, so wanted to acknowledge that. And then Chief Johns, did you have any updates? I didn't get a chance to talk to you. I don't know if you have any updates that you wanted to share with council. No is a perfectly fine answer if you don't have anything.
Well, besides Pendell's graduation from the academy and Butler's conversion to Sergeant and sharing Friday updates.
Yes.
The vents keep rolling.
So for the camera, or the microphone, so Officer Pendell graduated from the academy last Friday, last Friday? Two Fridays ago. And Sergeant Butler was sworn in as sergeant. And then police have been very active with volunteer and non-volunteer activities. And then I just, I'm going to put Counselor Quigley on the spot, and this is, I guess, more of a question than an announcement. Recruitment, I'd like to get some direction from council, specifically the incoming mayor, on the plan for recruiting the vacant council seat.
Sure, thanks, Julia. Right now, I think what I'd like to do is make sure when we have our goal-setting session that we have a full council. And so having said that, I would like to open the process for any interested parties to submit their name to fill the vacant council seat in two weeks.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Do you want letters of interest? You don't need that anyway.
Yes, please. Letters of interest, and I'd like to, you know, leave it.
Similar to how we've done it in the.
Yeah, and I'd like to leave it open until the end of January.
Okay.
So that'd be great, and I encourage folks to really think about it and come help us give some direction.
Thank you. We will do that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Julia, do we have a date for goal-setting, or have we done that yet? No?
No, that is on my to-do list, but I guess I'll need to get together with Brian and see kind of what our target date is to get somebody on board so that we can make sure it's not before that person is on board.
Sure.
And then also coordinate with council on what dates and time periods work best. So more to come on that.
Okay.
Okay.
That is all I have.
That's all you have, okay. Communication from myself and/or the council. I don't have anything else tonight.
This is Counselor Hook.
Oh, go ahead, please.
Hey, so this is going to be my last time speaking as counsel. I'm going to try to not get choked up, but I just wanted to express my deepest gratitude to all of the community members that went out and voted, both back in 2018 and again, was it 2018? Hasn't really been that long. Anyway, but who voted then and then voted in this election as well. I also wanted to express gratitude to the wonderful staff that we have at the city of Stateon. This journey has been very eye-opening in some of the most positive ways. I know that I am someone that likes to challenge a lot, and it's just in my nature, but I hope that it's always been expressed how wonderful of a job I think that our city staff does. To Julia, I, I will be, I'm sure I'll be communicating with you and seeing you anyway, but you have impressed me so much with the work that you've put forward so far. And Counselor Patty, it has been an honor to work with you. I really appreciate your, the way that you look at different situations with such logic. Counselor Ort, I really appreciate the compassion and the detail and the way that you do a lot of outreach into the community. I think that that's beautiful. Mayor Porter, you are so dedicated to the city, and there are not enough words to express my gratitude for the longevity of your dedication and the heart that you have for this community. Counselor Quigley, I am so proud that you are going to be our next mayor. I can't think of a better person for the role, and I've appreciated the guidance that you gave me in the very beginning of becoming a counselor, so thank you so much for that. And Counsel McDonald, you are, you are, you are incredible. I have gotten to work with you a whole bunch, but the way that you care about particular issues and you bring forth your voice in those times where, where you just know that you have so much, like, conviction and passion for the project, I appreciate it that you speak up and voice your concerns and voice what it is that you care about. So to all of you, it has been nothing but an honor to work with each one of you, and I am excited for the new council that's coming on. I think that they are going to do a great job representing a completely different viewpoint. And whoever fills the vacancy, I know that we've had plenty of wonderful candidates in the past, and I am sure that that will be the same for the future. We have a lovely community here, and thank you for the experience, a beautiful experience working with this, with our community.
Thank you. Thank you, Paige.
Thank you, Paige.
Others?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to address Counselor Hook. Thank you for your kind words, and thank you for pushing me that day when I came to the council meeting to run for this position. And I didn't know what I was getting myself into, but obviously I enjoyed it enough to do it again, so thank you for that, and thank you for your passion as well for the community, because I know that you did this because you care. And even if we don't always see eye to eye on issues, I know that your heart is there, so thank you for, for doing this. It's not an easy, like Mayor Porter said, it's not always an easy thing, but we do it because we care, and so thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor? This is Counsel Patty. Paige, I just want to say thank you for your service to this community. That means a lot to me. I was honored to meet you four years ago, and you really drove me to run, because you showed me that it was attainable. And our conversations prior to running and things like that, every time I talked to you, it was like, hey, this is, this is how we can do this. This is how we're going to do this. And that motivated me, and I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for doing that, because I'm happy where I'm at, and I'm glad that you were with us and drove us to be better, so thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much. It's, I'm so glad to see you guys in those seats.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It really has been an honor to serve with you and beside you these last four years, and, you know, the award that you got today is a testament to, like Counselor Hook said, that your commitment to the community and the fact that you care. I just want to say thank you, and I've learned a lot, and maybe I won't be on the council for that long, but I hope that I can make a difference, like I feel like you have made over the, over the last several years.
For some that really get the bug, this is a terminal disease. This is, they get the, yeah, yeah.
But thank you.
Okay.
You're appreciated.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Terminal disease. I wonder if we can do it over again. What I would tell you is, I really, having been with you the longest on this, on this body, I think there's a lot of time where I looked at you and said, what's he talking about? But there's a lot more times where I said, yep, that's right, and tried to help you articulate that position, or try to sway my fellow counselors as to your viewpoint on a certain topic. So I know this is a sometimes difficult job. I think there's a lot of times where it's misunderstood, but at the end of the day, it's the result, the unresult of improvements on the community. And I think over that service of time that you've had, there's a lot of improvements in this community, thanks to your dedication. So I appreciate the time I spent with you. I appreciate the commitment you made to the town, and I, as well as your longevity, so thank you for doing that. Counselor Hook, thank you as well for your passion that you brought to the table. You know, there were some times where we definitely disagreed on things, but there's also times where I found myself saying, wow, I agree with Counsel Hook today. So thank you for always being there and being passionate about it, and really speaking from your heart. I know there's a lot of times it wasn't easy for you to do, but at the end of the day, you talked what you believed in, and that's important, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I'm the last to speak, probably. Counselor Hook, I definitely always thought of you as a kindred spirit and someone who I definitely shared probably the most values with and saw eye to eye the most with, and I definitely valued, I definitely always felt like you were on my team, and you had my back when I, when I voiced my opinion, so definitely appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, hey, you, you appointed me those few years ago, so thank you for that, and it's been, it's been a great experience so far, and I'm appreciative that you saw value in my perspective, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You know, this all started almost 50 years ago in trying to liven up civics classes at the high school, which were required, but not much enthusiasm for them. And the idea of what's happening at City Hall maybe livened them up a little bit. I hope so. Nobody else, the football coaches didn't want to teach civics, so it fell to me. Okay, thank you all. There are going to be some Christmas parties somewhere. The city having any Christmas parties?
Not, yeah, we have treats for you at the end of the evening.
Yeah? Isn't there one at the library?
Oh, the library always has.
Are they having a Christmas party?
Are you, are you wanting a Christmas ball? Is that what I'm getting?
No, no, I just was hoping somebody had punching carrot cake somewhere.
There might be some carrot cake.
Oh.
Cooking a prime rib on Saturday if you want some.
Is there a cake back there somewhere?
There is.
Or doughnuts.
Treats from the oven oven, so.
Really? Wonderful, okay.
And Counselor Hook, I mean it, we will save one for you if you're going to be back anytime soon.
But a happy Christmas and a wonderful New Year to all of you. And if there's nothing else, let's give it up for tonight. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
All right. Are you ready to go? Huh? But there's cake back there. We might, we might have a doughnut or something, huh?